Good evening, welcome to the Lakeville Planning Board Meeting. It's for today, 5/27/21. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law C-30A Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the May 27th to 2021 public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, in this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at http://www.lakecam.tv/ Are we all ready? I guess we should take attendance. Barbara Mankowski, Pete, Peter Conroy here, Michelle Ekran, and Jack Lynch.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all set there. Okay, number one is going to be our public hearing. We'll open that public hearing now. This is a presentation by Zenith Consulting Engineers concerning the application for approval of a definitive subplan submitted by BIZIO. And I'm going to make a correction here, it's actually Contracting Construction, excuse me, Construction, BIZIO and Construction Inc. For a four lot subdivision located at Rachel's Way, including three ways Rachel's Way and four Rachel's Way. So at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Jamie Dissonet, who is speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Jamie Dissonet, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. Mrs. Chairwoman, if I may share the screen?
Please.
Thank you. All right, again, good evening. Tonight before you, we have a four lot subdivision off of County Road utilizing an existing, an existing private way which was subdivided years back by Azor Land Sciences. The purpose of this plan is to create three new residential house lots and increase the square footage of the existing house lot in the back, which we have entitled Lot 1A. So as of right now, the existing property consists of a four main lot off of County Road and one house in the back with approximately 33 acres in this open parcel here. As you can see, there's wetlands that make up a portion of the lot. Approximately 23 acres of the site is upland, which is a very large amount. And back on the previous plan, they had done a waivered Form C subdivision, waiving roadway construction and the like to be able to gain the ability for a buildable lot in the loop. What we're proposing, again, to obtain these three new buildable lots is to actually do some improvements to the right of way, including extending the length of it to create frontage for lots two, three, and four. Our frontage would be based off of Rachel's Way itself. Lot four would comprise approximately of 2.18 acres. Lot three would be 4.79 acres. Lot two would be roughly 24 acres. And lot one is going to increase to about 4.39 acres. On each of these sites, we're looking at proposing houses, as you'll be able to see in a second. We're showing some conceptual houses. Obviously, the individual home builders, buyers may change, may change the concept to a certain degree. But in general, we would typically expect to see houses placed up towards the road in this manner as the property does slope from this way back. And then there's going to be a house towards the back here on the 24 acre lot. And we feel pretty confident that this is going to be roughly where the house is to a pretty good degree. What we've done for the roadway construction is, I'm going to get to the next page, is starting at County Street, which is a Mass DOT roadway, so we will need a curb cut from Mass DOT, is the property slopes all the way back. So what we're doing is we're picking up the drainage with the grass swale on the side of the roadway, going underneath the driveways with piped culverts to continue the flow all the way back into a drainage basin towards the rear of the cul-de-sac here. For roadway, we're proposing a 14 foot wide paved and six foot wide gravel shoulder, the entire length with a actual cul-de-sac around the end and the gravel on the inside strip so that there can be fire access for fire trucks turning, et cetera. As far as drainage is concerned, we have it swaling around on both sides. So the water coming down will actually be able to swill around and get into the drainage basin. So this is going to collect pretty much all of the roadway water and get it into the drainage basin so it's treated and, you know, metered out and discharged appropriately. As you can see on our profile, the slopes of the road are actually very gentle. The steepest slope being about four and a half percent and the lightest slopes being close to 1% at the entrance and somewhere towards the middle here. We've also included vertical curves as required in the regulations for soft transitions in between the different elevations. The drainage basin itself is sized to handle the 100 year storm. We do include an overflow spillway. We're proposing a fence that wraps around the basin itself. And one of the things that we tried to utilize was the existing topography of the site. I'm going to bring us to the detail sheet that shows it a little better. What we're doing is we're taking advantage of the existing slope of the ground and then building a berm towards the end to catch the water. So instead of just having one, one normal flow, this basin will actually hold flow on its natural surface to allow it to infiltrate into the ground and build up along the side and meter out this outlet structure as needed. And like I said, this is designed to handle the 100 year storm. As far as the roadway is concerned, our cross section, again, going over the 14 foot wide pave with the six foot shoulder, and then we're doing a two foot wide at the bottom, grass swale. This will handle, again, all the roadway water and water that's discharged into it and get that into the basin. The nice thing about grass swales is it provides treatment. It's also the cross-country style drainage, which I believe has some low impact development qualities to it as well. Let me see if there's anything else. No, I think I've covered just about everything as far as the design is concerned. I'm happy to go over, we are, as with all of these waivered subdivision roads, we're asking for some construction waivers, but we're also proposing that this remain private, meaning that it will never be a burden to the town. This will be put into a homeowners association. Attorney Michael O'Shaughnessy has already been contracted by BIZIO Construction and they, they're going to work on, and we should have them for, before the next meeting. We'll have some roadway maintenance documents. And it will be very similar to what we did on Bella, which has the drainage, the drainage provisions, the maintenance provisions, the access provisions, all of the things that I know the board in the past has looked for in these types of projects. So we'll be able to present that to the board for review ahead of time. And the waivers themselves, we're asking for, we're asking for a few waivers. Let's see here. One of the waivers is the property line to curb radius. Another one is the minimum right of way width. We're looking to not, not put in a 24 foot wide paved road. Also, the dead end street length, Lakeville has a 750 foot dead end street policy. They have granted waivers to that in the past. In this case, we're looking to bring it up to just over 1,000 linear feet. Again, where we're doing large lots, especially with a large lot at the end of 24 acres plus, this seems to make a lot of sense to justify that waiver. We're asking for the waiver of curbs and berms because we're utilizing the cross-country drainage with the swales. If we put a berm in, we can't get the water into that swale. Sidewalks, which is pretty traditional on these waived private roads, and water facilities and water supplies and gas mains, since none are available in this part of town. Streetlights, which is a very common waiver in a case like this. And also, street trees, because it's going to be a private way as proposed. So that's a pretty standard wave request as well. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board members may have.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the floor. Does anyone have any comments from the planning board? Pete?
Yeah, Jamie, Jamie, would you say that the length, the width of the street is going to be 14 plus six?
Yes, it'll be 20 overall, Peter, kind of like what we've done on Equestria Way and a couple of these others, so it meets fire, the fire code.
Six only on one side and then grass on the other, is that correct?
That is correct.
There's no reason for gravel on the left side, I assume, as you're driving in, is that right?
That's correct. What we're doing is, on the high side, we're going with the gravel and then we're putting the pavement up against the grass swale, assuming that people are going to be more apt to drive on the pavement. And so the pavement itself, any contaminants, any dirts or silts will roll off and get into the swale and therefore be treated either by the swale itself or the drainage basin itself.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Anybody else? Michelle?
Hi Barbara, if I may, there were some comments from the Board of Selectmen and I think, you know, it goes along with what Jamie just said as far as, you know, recommending that, you know, the road not be accepted in the future by the town. And also, CONCOM had mentioned that there, there would be an NOI needed. And I guess it was the Fire Chiefs, you know, conditions that I would definitely like us to take note of and make sure that we include.
I have not seen the Fire Chiefs' comments.
I haven't either. I'm just looking through the packet now to see if they're there.
No, they weren't, I think I read.
Well, we should definitely ask that.
We, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have it, I just read it right before the meeting. I'm looking for it as well, I read it and now I can't find it. But basically, the Fire Chief said that the road be constructed strong enough to support his vehicles. And other than that, I don't think that he had an issue that there is, there is clearance for turnaround at the end, so no culverts are going under the road, is that right, Jamie?
That's correct, they'd be under the driveways. If I may, we're proposing a culvert here, we're proposing culverts here and here at the driveways. But under the actual pavement and gravel of the road, there's none proposed.
Jamie, the road is, is wide enough to accommodate the fire trucks?
Absolutely, yeah, this, this is, we've, we've done this quite a bit in town, Jack. The 20 foot overall is the state requirement for traveled width. And then the 14 foot pave plus the six foot gravel shoulder gives enough ability for two cars, if they're coming towards one another, to be able to pass each other safely.
And I assume the swale is a standard swale that can handle all of the ten minutes and the runoff?
What it, what it does is because it's a grass channel, Jack, and that's a great question, what happens is the, the grass itself really helps filter out and also reduce the speed of flow. And then what happens is, once it gets to the drainage basin, we have a thing called the sediment forbay. That sediment forbay also helps remove any type of fine contaminants that get in there. So yeah, there's, there's kind of redundancies here in some of the, the water quality devices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, I found the letter from the Fire Chief, so I thought I would just read what he had mentioned. The Fire Chief requests that a clearly marked fire lane be a condition of approval for this project. This fire lane, also known as a fire department access road, would be 20 feet in width, have a 13.5, 13 and a half foot of overhead clearance, maintained, clear, and usable, and able to support the weight of department vehicles. The other comment, then he refers to the laws around requirements for fire trucks. The suggested location of the lane would be along the rear of the building running north and south. Is this, no, this is the wrong property.
You know what, yeah, that's the Kenneth Welch.
Okay, good, because I thought I was losing my mind, I'm like, wait a minute, okay.
Yeah.
I do have it here, Barbara, and, and what Pete pointed out.
Talking about us there for a minute.
This way.
The construction to accommodate the weight, the gravel shoulders to be kept free and clear of obstructions such as utility poles, and the grade of the road is concerning. He, he mentions 527 CMR, 1.00, requires no more than one foot of grade change per 20 feet of run. The code also states that the grade shall accommodate the design limitations of fire apparatus. Submitted drawings indicate that this road is at the upper limitation of that requirement. The Fire Department would like to include a condition where the road is evaluated by the Fire Department for navigability by Lakeville Fire Apparatus.
Navigability, huh?
Um, okay.
If, if I may, the, the four and a half percent slopes are actually very gentle. The, I know in, in the Lakeville Planning regs, we're allowed to go up to 6%, but the four and a half percent sloped road is extremely gentle. We've, we've done five and six percents in town and have absolutely no issue with navigation. These, these radiuses, and I have no problem with the Fire Department looking at these and vetting it. I welcome, I can, I can sit down and show them the fire turning software that we have as well. And we have analyzed that on this, so I, I have no problem talking to Chief O'Brien and working that out.
Okay, yeah, and also you don't have a letter, and so we need to get a copy of the letter. Okay, we'll get you a copy of that so you can see.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Okay, so we have, we need to talk, we need to talk about that a little bit further. We need to talk with the Fire Chief, so we have that issue. I wanted to, we have a couple of conditions that I'd like to think about. If we're going to keep this as a private road and you're going to be doing an operations agreement anyway, a covenant, if you will, I don't know what legal format you're going to use for the maintenance of those stormwater drains and so forth, can you include snow removal? I worry a lot about roads this long not having adequate snow removal.
Yep.
And yeah, so if that could be built in, that would be, I think, really valuable.
Absolutely.
So as I understand it, we still have to go through the Commission as well?
Well, um, actually, no. Everything that we're proposing roadway wise is out of the 100 foot buffer. I have also no problem sitting down with, actually, no, you know what? There's a little piece in here that's within the 100 foot buffer. So yeah, yep, technically, I think Mr. Bouchard is right. We would, we would need to deal with a small stretch that's right up in this vicinity here. So yeah, we can definitely, we can definitely get that part going, that's, that's not a problem. This, we're probably 75 feet from our roadway work to the, to the wetland itself. So yeah, not a problem.
Okay, so Jamie, just, you went fast and I was trying to understand the differences for the waivers that you requested. So looks that you're going to have a basically 24 feet wide, right? And the rule says that they're supposed to be 50, it says width, I'm on the.
Sure, so the actual, the right of way is supposed to be 50 feet in width. In this case, what we're doing is, we're proposing a variable width because this beginning portion of Rachel's Way is in existence and is already variable width just by this corner over in here itself. It doesn't really make sense to have a little triangle piece floating in nowhere. So when John Pink had developed this with Azor, he, he kind of just did a straight line and ran it from there. But truly, the intention of this right of way is to be 40 feet wide, which we're showing here. So that's pretty standard for what we've been doing for the private right of ways. I do know, one of the nice things that the planning boards in the past have liked about the 40 foot right of way is that if somebody goes to take and upgrade this roadway to try to get additional lots in the future, it already has a non-compliance feature to it. So the board would have some power to say no if they didn't want it to be upgraded. So a lot of times, I think that this was actually encouraged to ask for the 10 foot reduction so that they wouldn't be looking at future, additional lots in the future. I do know the BIZIOs don't plan on subdividing this back piece for additional house lots from my discussions with them, so I don't think that, I think the town's interest and their interest are pretty in line.
Okay. Okay, so what do you think about, I'd like to, I think what I would feel comfortable with is continuing to our first meeting in June. And then getting the information both from Conservation, you know, talk with Bouchard and talk to Fire Chief and maybe get some updated comments from them. Does anyone else agree with that? I guess I need a second. Pete says yes.
Well, actually, a question, Barbara, before we go, utilities, Jamie, underground?
I believe as of right now, they're above ground, Pete. I believe the BIZIOs right now are on with us. Leo, Jared, do you guys have a preference as to underground or above ground?
There's already like three or four poles down there, so it's above ground and then to the houses will be under. We're in the, we're in that, we're in that 20 feet overall are the utility poles. It's not in that 20 foot?
No, it's, it's going to be within the 40 foot right of way layout, Peter, so the 24.
Not in the gravel, correct?
No, exactly, it'll be outside of the 20 foot travel area. It would have to be in the shoulder.
That's good. Go ahead, Barbara, sorry.
Well, you raised an excellent question, thank you, Peter. You know, I've always, I grew up in the Southwest, so forgive me for asking a stupid question. I just can't imagine building anything with above ground utilities. So is there a huge cost differential? I mean, it seems like it would make so much more sense to put that stuff underground and make it less vulnerable to outages and so forth. That's a question for the developer, I guess.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the power's already there and yeah, it would be very expensive to change that. But again, you know, we're taking what's there and from, to every house will be underground.
Okay. So Barbara, if I.
I know that's my plan, so.
If I can on the screen here, if, if you, you can see my little hand cursor? So there's a pole right here, and there's another pole here, and it goes up, there's another pole over here and then one here. So they would be looking to most likely connect onto the pole that's here, and they're already the majority of the way down the road. To take and strip and take all the poles out, reconnect the houses, and start back at the road would be quite an undertaking.
Okay, just had to ask the question.
Understood, yep.
So my motion is to continue this hearing up until the first meeting in June, which is going to be June 3rd, no, June 10th, June 10th.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, Barbara, before you close that, you might want to open it up to the audience.
Oh, yes, we have, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, I'm so sorry. Sean, are you able to put the, make sure that we can hear from everybody?
Do you mean like comment from Facebook or?
Well, no, I don't think we need to go to Facebook.
Yeah, everyone should be able to unmute themselves and.
Okay.
Ask.
Do you have any comments or questions from the public? Not seeing any yet. Okay, Sean, can you just tell us, do we have anything on the comment section that we should be looking at?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Okay, so what I'm seeing now is we don't have any comments from the public, so I'm going to go ahead and continue this public hearing to June 10th for that planning board meeting, I believe that is the correct date. And we will look forward to hearing back from you, Jamie, and what you find out.
All right, thank you very much.
You know what, I'm going to hold, we didn't, we didn't vote on that. See what a bad chair I am? Jamie, I didn't have you and everybody else, can we vote on that motion, please? All in favor?
Aye.
So I got Peter, Barbara, Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, great, we'll see you on the 10th. Okay, next agenda item. Let's see here. Okay, Jamie, the next item was you as well, I believe we continued that.
Yeah, we're requesting a continuance, and I see Kiko's here. Kiko, we're asking for the continuance tonight, we have, just as a brief update, if I may, Madam Chair. We've reached out to Natural Heritage, we've retained site biologists, and we've also engaged an attorney for the legal paperwork that's needed. The past two weeks kind of have flown by, but they're still in the process of preparing that. I do know that the limits of work have been staked out. I believe the erosion or silt fence for turtle fencing is, is being installed, and I expect that it will be completed by the beginning of next week per the wishes of the endangered species people at Natural Heritage. What I'd like to do is ask for continuance to the next meeting and that way we hopefully will have that paperwork and maybe some additional information to report to the board so we can get a little bit more out of the meeting.
Okay, I do show it as being continued on my agenda. So, Kiko, did you have any comments to? Okay, all right. So with that having been said, we're going to continue, making, we don't have to make a motion, that has already been continued, so we will see you on the 10th for that item. Next item on the agenda is site plan review for 210 Kenneth Welch Drive, and then I can get to the right letter to review. And this will be presented tonight by Outback Engineering. So who do we have online for Outback?
Hi folks, Mike Barelli, I'm the owner of Matea Marine. And somewhere, I think Matt's going to join us. There he is.
Matt Groschuttle with Outback Engineering.
I have to, I'm going to hand a lot off to Matt. Matt's obviously did all the engineering for this. And folks, to be quite honest with you, I've been out of the picture for the last three out of five weeks in the hospital. Good news is, I'm on my, on the mend, but Matt's handled everything. I'm here to take any questions about the company and what we do. But as far as the engineering, if you can just gear everything towards Matt, I'd very much appreciate it.
Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to start out?
Yeah, sure. So this is, this application is for site plan review is for addition to an existing building. We're looking to add 8,000 square foot addition to the existing building. And if I could share my screen with you?
Please.
So this is the, the parcel is currently developed, there's an existing 10,000 square.
Can you switch your screens, I think we're on your, the wrong screen. Probably have a two-screen system. We're seeing your site plan review file.
Okay.
Happens to the best of us. There we go, oh, could we have you now?
Okay. Is that showing up now?
Not yet.
I have a little trouble here.
Do you have dual monitors?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, maybe you just need to open the file then, because what we saw was, I think, your files.
Okay, is this working now?
No, can you share a screen now? Just so you know, I'm terrible with this technology myself, so we'll all get used to it.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. So as I'm saying, this is an existing developed lot, there's an existing 10,000 square foot building here. Paved areas around the building, existing crushed stone area and a gravel area in the back used for. Um, existing crushed stone area and a gravel area in the back used uh, for storage uh, of materials and and boats and what, and uh, stuff that they're working on. Um, basically, what we're looking to do is take this existing gravel area and put a, an addition on it. Um, so we've, we've provided some drainage calculations um, and stormwater management documents for you uh, with our submittal. Um, there's basically no increase in impervious areas. Uh, since we're just putting the building on an existing gravel area, so there's really no impact to the drainage on the site.
To drainage? Even though we're decreasing the impervious area?
Uh, well, where the building is going is is currently gravelled. Um, so it's essentially almost impervious now. We've run the drainage calculations and there's no, really no change to what's going going to happen out here. Uh, we're not clearing any vegetation or 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 changing anything really. Uh, we are going to take a little area in the front where there's crushed stone and convert that back to lawn just to get back under the uh, coverage, uh, lot coverage requirements uh, for the, for the property.
Which I don't have a problem with because I'm a lawn freak and when you guys drive by, please check it out, it looks like the eighteenth at Augusta, I put it in myself last year. So when Matt said, Mike, you might need a little bit more lawn, I went, how much more, you know, so, you know, I'm actually kinda excited to uh, expand it a little bit, but um, go ahead Matt, just trying to make some light of it.
Sure. So we also have uh, called out some typical uh, construction areas for a uh, washout pit for the construct, for the concrete trucks. Um, some staging and storage areas. Um, we've looked at the existing septic uh, information uh, on record with the town. Uh, we're not proposing to increase the uh, staff at the site, it's just mainly to bring stuff that's outside currently being stored outside into a more controlled environment uh, inside storage. Um, so this existing septic, the existing paved uh, parking areas should be sufficient uh, for what we're looking to do. Um, and then the building itself will be more than forty feet back from the side setback, so we meet all the zoning requirements for the setbacks.
Do you have a um, uh, a side view of what it's gonna look like when the additions put on, the rendering?
Yes, bear with me for a second.
I should, I shouldn't have asked that question while I just figured you would scroll down, so if you need to finish.
Oh, no, it's on a separate uh, file. I don't have the, the file uh, with me right now, yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna be beautiful.
One story, two stories, how how tall is this? Is the first, it's gonna be the same height as the other building?
Yeah, matter of fact, it's gonna be the exact same height as the other building. Um, same color, same everything, it's, it.
Okay.
Um, and that, that's, that's my uh, meticulousness, making sure that I even had, met with space building and had them bring me out samples to make sure that the color matched. And it's spot on, it's basically just gonna be a, an extension of what we already have here.
Okay.
So, I don't know, if can, could you see this? Uh, this is basically the, the profile or the elevations of, of the building.
This is a metal building, right?
It is.
Okay.
And we have two bays only?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we did have, uh, I guess I'd open up to planning board first to it, then we'd have any comments?
Just said, um, did you see the letter um, from conservation requiring uh, an intent um, letter? Moving forward, it's not, not really our concern, but just to let them know that they'll have to do that.
Yeah, I did uh, receive that um, today and I tried to reach out to the conservation agent, but wasn't able to get ahold of him. And I'm not sure um, which areas he's talking about, because there's, there's no uh, wetlands on the property, there's, there's, there, I know there's some cranberry bogs off to the, to the side here. Uh, to the turn, to the east of the property. Um, and everything else around the, the area is already developed, so I'm not sure where we would be within a hundred feet of, of a wetland area. But uh, I'll, I'll take that up with the conservation uh, agent.
Where he thinks, yeah, okay, sounds good. Um. What else? Any other questions? We had the Board of Selectmen, I think, had a question about um, parking. Are we gonna be adding parking um, to this, this property?
No, there's no proposed additional parking. Uh, right now, there's uh, sixteen spaces out there already. Um, and we have a parking summary uh, on the plan, which shows we should have sufficient parking for the proposed use. Based on the uses of the building, uh, we would need about thirteen spaces and there's sixteen spaces out there now.
And what about storage? Do you have any storage for equipment?
As far as what kind of equipment?
Well, anything that would be stored outside. Uh, that was one of the questions from the Board of Selectmen. They were concerned about the parking in the rear of the buildings and the storage of equipment.
I, I don't, I don't have any equipment. The only thing I store out there is our clients' boats that we work on on the off season.
Okay, how many do you think you'll be storing on site?
Um, there's normally, there's normally anywhere from eight to ten boats, you know, going in and out of the building. At a time, we, you know, I guess on the average, we have anywhere from eight to ten projects going on at a time.
Okay. So between boats and a, and a putting green, I think you might be seeing my husband more often. Okay. Any other questions so far, guys? I think I have one more question, so. Okay, so did we have any changes? I guess this is a question for Matt, Outback. Um, do we have any changes to the drainage because of the changes? Uh, I know you said you did a drainage calculation. What was the change between what it was before and what it's going to be now?
Bas- basically, there's no change.
No change at all. Yep, you said that earlier, I wrote it down, okay.
Um, there, the, there's an existing drainage, um, the roof leaders for the existing building, we're gonna tie into to those, um, the uh, the, the upper portion of the addition and the rest will be sheet flowed out around the back, which then the site normally drains out and around back to this drainage basin in the back rear of the property.
Okay. Uh, Barbara.
Barbara, one question, oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Sorry, I was just gonna say that um, you started reading the letter from the fire chief regarding this property earlier. Um, and, and I believe he is asking for a fire lane uh, twenty foot wide uh, with the thirteen point uh, five foot overhead clearance along the rear of building running north and south along new and existing portions. So, I thought there was, on the plans that we received, it said on the plans, fire access road, but then I did not see one included and I didn't see it on the plans that he was just um, discussing. Has there been consideration for that?
Yeah, yeah, I did reach out to the fire chief and discuss that and he, I believe he supplied that markup that showed a, a fire lane in the back. Um, when I just talked to him about that, uh, he suggested putting signs on the back of the building, no parking, fire lane. And then uh, that, uh, Mike said he, he would keep at least twenty feet along the back of the building clear so that uh, they need to get the fire apparatus around.
It's even more than that, I mean, we, there's, I think currently the paved, the paved area, I can't see it, Matt, how far back does the paved area go?
Yeah, the paved area goes to the back of the, the existing building. The rest of this is gonna be, you know.
Going towards the back, like going towards the, I see a measurement there, I just can't see it. Either way, I, you know, I think that paved area goes back every bit of thirty feet anyway. And I, I'm actually, um, I don't like anything up against the building, so I push everything back away from the building anyway. Because for the same reasons as the fire department, we like to be able to drive around with the boats. And we only pull the boats around with fork trucks. So, we need that, we need that twenty, thirty feet ourselves, so it's always clear anyways and so I wasn't too concerned about it when the fire chief uh, mentioned it, I was like, we always keep it clear anyway.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate to add that to the plans as a condition of approval.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Um, have you received a copy of the letter that the fire chief provided?
Yes, we did.
Um, terrific, so I guess we have to come up with a motion to condition that. What other questions do you guys have? I think, I think I've asked that three or four times and I don't, I don't see that I have any more questions on this project, it looks pretty straightforward to me. Anybody else?
Barbara, I think we can make a motion, but I just wanna, um, so, uh, as long as we're clear about the notice of intent from the conservation, that that just gets worked out between them and um, that it gets properly labeled for its fire lane, that is, is, is really my only two um, exceptions. But I'd like to make a motion to accept the plan as drawn.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack? Was that I, yes?
Yes, aye.
And myself, Barbara, aye. So the motion passes um, unanimously with two conditions for the fire lane being properly labeled and just to validate on the notice of intent with conservation commission. Okay. Okay, so I think we can close that item.
Excellent, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Boy, being a chair is a lot of hard work.
Doing a great job.
Good.
Alright, guys, so next one we're gonna talk about, we're gonna look at the preliminary plan for Cassidy Estates, forty-four Clear Pond Road and fifty-nine Parkport. There's been a withdrawal letter, so we're gonna accept that. Um, I guess we have to make a motion to accept it. You guys, have you seen that withdrawal letter?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter, aye. Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Barbara, aye. Motion passes unanimously, so that's been withdrawn. Okay. Forty-three Main Street, we also have, except that, we'd also need to accept the withdrawal letter, so do we have a motion for that?
Also moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Yourself, Barbara, motion passes unanimously. Onto item number seven, remove uh, earth removal plan for fifteen Main Street.
Good evening, uh, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers. Um, I believe that this is a permit that's been filed with the selectmen. Um, but I believe in this case, they've asked for input from the planning board. And so our client, uh, Mr. Bo McMahon is with us and myself uh, to try to address any questions that the board may have um, on, on this earth removal. Um, I guess you guys would be making a recommendation to the selectmen. Okay, so we're here, if you have any questions, uh, if not, please discuss amongst yourselves and we're here just to assist.
Perfect.
Jamie, can I ask what triggered this um, soil removal? Uh, is it just the vast quantity that's involved compared to like a normal um, construction site?
Yeah, I think, I think it's just the mechanism, um, you know, the, the mechanism itself with site plan uh, site plan review, so it's not that we're changing anything from the site plan that was approved by the planning board. It's just in, in going through the permitting, it was found that a earth removal permit is also needed. And so we're, we're doing that avenue as directed by, I believe it was the zoning enforcement, which is exactly what we do, he tells us and, and we follow, we follow what they tell us to do.
I'm not seeing a letter, did some, did I miss a board of selectmen letter on this topic, because I'm not seeing it here on what they're asking us to, to specifically comment on. Am I missing it or is it in the package? I don't.
Never read one.
No. But I did check the uh, general bylaws and it does mention that, um, you know, planning board should review um, the very end of the section on earth removal. Um, it does say all applications for original or renewal permits for the removal of ours shall be referred to the planning board, so I believe that's the reasoning behind this. Um, I did speak with Mark about this and I, if, if it would be okay, um, I'd like to read what his recommendation was. Is that okay? Um, so he said that he would, he would recommend a motion to uh, recommend approval to the board of selectmen with the condition that a civil engineer provided two plans to the board of selectmen. The first plan to show existing elevations prior to earth removal and the second plan to show final elevations and calculations of the change in volume of material calculations on the completed conditions plan. And then he said, for possible discussion, could this be done and estimated using the existing site plan and the proposed site plan? Therefore, a nominal fee could be paid upfront for the permit. Any additional material removed could be picked up and adjusted using a plan confirming final elevations match the proposed site plan. So, um, the fees are determined based on how much is removed, so I believe he's asking for a portion of that upfront with um, the permit, when the permit is issued and then the balance to be um, paid upon completion. So I think I saw it was about nineteen thousand cubic yards that is proposed for removal. Is that?
So correct.
Bo, I believe that sounds right, correct?
It's approximately nineteen thousand.
And, and Mark's request is absolutely fine with, with the applicant and, and us. Um, what we would do is, um, after the construction is done, we would do uh, an as-built to confirm grades and compare to the existing condition that's there now. And based on our software, we can compare the two surfaces and get a volume difference.
Okay, um, Michelle, I didn't see that, the communication from Mark, so is he asking for those to be provided beforehand or one to be provided afterwards? Because the way I read, I interpreted that, it meant that we wanted to see kind of an estimate of before and after. You know, using the existing plans and then what the proposal would be.
Yes, um, the preliminary fee, uh, fee to be based off of what has been proposed and then the balance to be paid after the actual um, is completed, so we would need to have uh, that confirmed at, at the end.
Yeah.
The completion.
Yep, and that, that's, I think that was, that's part of the application, is we calculated what we were using with the proposed grades and then we would verify it with the as-built. I, I think that's a fantastic process.
Okay.
And one thing um, that we did kind of discuss um, was potential for a watering truck to control the dust during the process.
Yeah, so, if, if I may, part of his process, because there's gonna be a specific amount of disturbances, he will have to do dust control measures. Watering truck is very standard, especially if it's happening over the summer or windy, dry months. Um, but a- at any time, he is, they're supposed to control dust, the watering truck is the pretty standard operating procedure.
Okay.
And I didn't know if there's any other construction conditions that we would want to consider as well, if anyone else has anything.
No, just that, um, just, I'd like to add in addition to the dust control, that just Main Street be maintained as, as clean as possible. Uh, you already know that, I'm not uh, saying anything you don't know, so.
No, and, and you, and you guys have it pretty well wrapped up in the erosion control plan that you have with the, with the conditions on the site plan. Um, that's why we provided in the original design set, is anticipating that road needs to be kept clean. Uh, dust needs to be kept to a minimum, we need to stabilize lawn and seed slopes and, and bare soils and wrap things with erosion control um, silt fence or hay bale, so, um, so yeah, I believe you're very well covered in what you've already approved um, with this.
Okay, well, I think, um, I think it makes sense to do uh, exactly as Mark recommended, seems like everybody's in agreement. So I think we would make a letter of recommendation back to the board of selectmen. Uh, we can ask Kathy to do that, I think that's what they're asking for, correct?
I believe so.
So, um, I think we can ask Kathy to send a memo back to Board of Selectmen, just confirming um, exactly what um, Mark is recommending. And can I ask you, Michelle, to send an email to Kathy and just copy me, ask her to do that? Um, and that way, they, the Board of Selectmen will have the information for their next meeting, maybe she can get that, that done tomorrow. Um, and I think that solves that, that issue.
Do you need a vote on that, Barbara, or no vote? Just our recommendation?
It's a recommendation, but I think would be better for us to have a vote.
So everything you just said, motion.
You're making that motion?
I am.
You think I just said? Okay. Great. And do you have a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously with Michelle, Peter, Jack and Barbara all voting in the affirmative. Okay, so that takes us through to items number, number eight, Julia's Way release of covenant.
Good evening. Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. So I spoke with attorney Michael O'Shaughnessy. He is representing the Malics who constructed the subdivision. Just as an update, Niles and myself met with the Malics out on site. We're trying to complete a couple of, of issues. We want the fire chief to go out and take a look to make sure he's comfortable with the turnaround at the end. And so they're working on getting that established. We expect that we're gonna need approximately four more weeks, so we were hoping for a continuance to the second meeting in June if possible.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's schedule that for the second meeting in June, which is gonna be, I think, 24? Jamie, are you here to talk about Ledgwood Estates as well?
No, I am not.
Jeez.
About Ledgwood Estates?
Do we need to take a vote on continuing or is that?
I think you typically do.
Let's take a vote. I've just been too many, too many, my day job today. I'm just not on top of it. Okay, so make a motion to, do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
You, Jamie.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Item, thank you guys for helping me follow along. Let's see, we have number nine, which is Ledgwood State, release of municipal interest in subdivision update. And I don't see anything in the packet about that.
So Barbara, if I may, the last that I had seen of this was a recommendation from Amy, which when I read it, it sounded as though, you know, it, it could be released after the approval at town meeting. So I'm not sure why it showed back up on our agenda at all.
Well, I'm not familiar enough with that one without going through my old files and reacclimating myself. So I'd like to suggest that we just continue this item number nine into our June 10th meeting. And if there's something to be discussed at that time, that we discuss it when Mark's here and maybe we have more information. Does, is everybody in agreement on that? I guess I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Barbara, yes. Jack, yes. Peter, yes? Okay, so item number nine will be continued to June 10th. Okay, has anyone had a chance to review, review the meeting minutes? Because I have not. I'm so sorry. I had multiple closings today, so it was a little bit hectic.
So the bulk of this, these minutes, this is from the hearing dated 3/18. So this was when Tyler read the findings. So the bulk of it is the findings that Tyler read and the portion that I read that, you know, was, other than the findings, did seem to be pretty straightforward.
I read them as well, Michelle, and I was gonna say the same thing, where most of it was actually, most of it was a hard copy that we received already, you know?
Yeah.
Not so much a recording of people's, what they said, so much as we already have it on paper, so. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
All in favor?
March 18th.
Barbara, Jack, yes? Peter?
Aye.
Yes, and Michelle?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We approve the meeting minutes for March 18th. What old business do we have tonight?
Um, how about the fee schedule? I still want us to implement that. Can we get that included on the next agenda?
Okay, so, so we'll do that. Any, any other new business, old business we want to address?
Barbara, just that maybe we should set dates. I know it's a ways out, but we should set a date where we will start to discuss the DOD. So that the people know, like, okay, you know, it might be the third, the, the second meeting in July or the first meeting in August, but we do take a break in August. So that kind of gives us a, a little slack there and then the next thing you know, it's September, so.
Right.
It goes fast, that's all. We don't have to decide tonight, but maybe at the next meeting, come up with some firmer dates and say, this is when we're gonna start. Maybe not the public hearing, but to start to kick around how we want to structure the whole life future of that.
I was gonna say the same thing, because at the last master plan implementation meeting, that subject came up and there's a lengthy discussion on it. Now, nothing was voted on at the town, the last town meeting. And then there was seemed to be a lot of Facebook chatter about, it's confusing and why isn't this done? What's happening with the planning board? Why aren't they doing this? So I think it's, like Peter says, it's, I think it's, we need to, you know, sit down and address that and come up with a, you know, firm plan and decision on that.
The decision that was made at that hearing date, I think there's been some misconceptions. There was not a mistake by planning board. There was nothing malicious or intentionally
No.
trying to, to stall that decision. The idea was, at, at least this is my recollection, I'm just gonna say it out loud. I do not feel that the proposal, the bylaw that was proposed that we saw would have passed, would have gotten our support at that meeting because we had just seen it. There had been very little discussion about it and we just, it was just very premature. And so during the discussion with the constituents, we said that we would like more time to come up with something that would be agreeable for everybody, because the law was passed with some intention. Abolishing it entirely is kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Let's at least look at why we made those rules in 2012. Somebody made those decisions and it passed. So we should be at least asking how we got there. So I think the discussion is important. But that, you know, I think there's a misconception out there that we sort of intentionally stalled that and it's just not the case.
So I think
clear about that.
I think at the master planning initiative meeting, which I think you were, you were listening to anyways.
Yep.
There was chatter on, you know, the chat section and Facebook about, I think there were people that were still unhappy with the old Lakeville Hospital project and somehow trying to, you know, get this DOD move forward isn't related to that. So there would be another Lakeville Hospital project, a distribution center built again.
But I, I can't, I don't know one person in town who disagrees with that. Like, I think everybody in town absolutely wants to maintain the rural character of our community, number one. That having been said, you know, the forefathers, the reason we inherited this town is the people who were running it for the past 50 years and beyond did some, made some really good decisions, some of which I didn't even understand until I came onto planning board and had the good fortune of working with Brian and Zink, who educated me on decisions and the reasons why they said things. So I just, I just think it's a point of clarification that it's good to look back and ask why we made the decisions before we, before we eliminate them entirely. We absolutely want to address this. And, and by the way, we were talking about this issue, I think, before even the hospital site came up. So I think we know it's something that needs to be addressed and that we're going to get something done at the fall town meeting. That's it. So I appreciate Peter being so proactive. How many hearings do you think we're gonna need, Peter? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I believe probably two hearings, but timing is everything, because it's, we can't do them too early, that's the thing. So I know, that's why I said, wait a little while, but we don't wait too long. There's a timeframe that you can have them prior to the meeting. Like, we couldn't have them next week and two weeks later is way too early legally for the town meeting. So the timing is, is better for August and September, or maybe even August is too early. But at least we could have our plan in place before the hearings. And then those hearings, I'm sure would be quite popular and then we'd be ready to go, you know?
Awesome. Yep, sounds great. Any new business? From anybody? I would like to share with you guys that I have provided a, some information on a consulting firm that does planning and legal support for land use. I think it's an important consideration for us to potentially get another resource in here until we have hired a full-time planner. There's been some discussion about the value of having some additional support onto planning board. And, you know, certainly, most of us are not planning experts, but we do have some big things that could, that could come about in town and I think we benefit from it. So I'll keep you posted. I've given the information to board of selectmen and town administrator for their consideration. Does anybody have questions about that? Thoughts? No? Okay. And we have a meeting, we have an invoice for South Coast Media. We need to approve. I guess I'd like to make a motion that we, that who's gonna be down at town hall next, because it needs to be signed, I believe.
I can, I can sign it on Monday. I won't be around tomorrow.
Monday's a big topic.
Tuesday.
I'll go sign it if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll be in town on Tuesday for sure.
So if you can swing by and sign it, make a motion. We have Pete sign that invoice.
Second.
All in favor? All right, guys. Next meeting is June. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Very. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a great night, guys. Thank you very much.